Attention was given from parties of all persuasions to making sure that this line got the funding that it needs to reopen and in as quickly a time as possible. It got a number of name checks on the campaign trail. I'll keep it apolitical and I won't say by whom. Immediately after that election, we did get again increased visibility. We had two ministerial visits in that time. In January and from Transport Secretary Grant Shapps and then a second from Chris Heaton Harris, who is the rail minister and he visited Bedlington Station. The latter of those coincided with the release of additional funds from central government. And that we've seen a series of these fund releases to support the feasibility studies and the various technical investigations that we've been required to do to help build our business case for submission to government in conjunction with an association with Network Rail. So, you know, that helped us to emphasise the line's credentials, which we all know and SenRug members know in particular are very significant and we know that there will be a huge benefit economically from getting this line open. That at that stage or immediately after that, of course, the Covid pandemic has struck and it's made life a little bit more complicated, but nonetheless, we haven't slowed down in terms of those studies that we've been undertaking in the time since. And all of that work, we were fortunate really at that stage, was desk-based. And so we were able to continue with that relatively unhindered. As we got a little bit further through the process and into the summer time. So we have been included in something called Project Speed, which is something that the government is looking at for two purposes, really. First of all, it was linked to Brexit and a need or a want to push the levelling up agenda and to make sure that we were getting investment in things like railway lines and other infrastructure. And then secondly, it's taken on a new element as part of the Covid economic recovery, which we all will need to see come about as we hopefully get back to normal in the coming months and on into the summer. As part of that process, we were required and did require to submit a draft business case to central government and to DFT. And that was considered rapidly by the department. And what that showed and continues to show, as those of you that are familiar with the project, is a very high cost to benefit ratio of the scheme. And when you talk to DFT officials, they will say things like, if we can't make it work here for this line, there is limited chance of making it work anywhere, such as the ease with which we should really be able to step forward and get this project implemented. As part of Project Speed, we were tasked with delivering faster but also a bigger and more complete scheme than was potentially envisaged at the start. So I think the last time I spoke to SenRug members, we were looking at maybe a phased implementation. And that was something that I had reluctantly agreed if whatever money we can get out of government, we will get it and we will implement that. And we will always be asking for more. And I know that will go for all of the other potential administrations and councillors who are on here. That's what we want is to get money in and get it done as quickly as possible and get as much done as possible. The, what happened though was that we were asked, well, instead of phase one and phase two, can you do everything all in one? That meant stations that were potentially scheduled for phase two in Seaton Delville and in, I think it was Blyth website at the time, that those came in to the overall project to be implemented immediately. And that is the route that we're now embarked on. At around about that time, as we were having those discussions with government, getting into the later part of last year, we've launched a consultation and many of you, probably all of you have seen that and your communities will have seen that. We had a number of hundreds of replies and I was getting briefings up until the point of 500. And I'm sure it went a bit further than that in terms of the amount of feedback that came in to the team, which is, as we've gone through that year, has scaled up. And so you've got Stuart McNaughton, who many of you may have spoken to previously, but we've also now got Rachel Bateman and a number of other people who are working in that team now on delivery. The consultation feedback was almost entirely positive, as you might expect for a project of this type. There were questions that got into the real detail around the positioning of the footpaths of where the bus drop off was, whether the, you know, the station orientation, the location, the number of car parking spaces are all very valid and relevant things. The linkage with the metro and so on. But, you know, we might touch on a few of those later, but really, you know, we'll need officers if you want to get into that level of detail in some of the questions. As we got on into the later part of the year and into November, that business case and the consultation was concluded. And we had a series of conversations with the Department for Transport and with Number 10 and their advisor, Andrew Gilligan, who's the transport spat for Boris. There's significant buy-in personally into this scheme from those individuals. And we got to a point where we were looking and Dennis was often on the phone or text message or email asking, when's that announcement coming? When's it going to be confirmed? And we did hope that it might have been an autumn statement, but we were still going through some of the detail. And in particular, and I wholeheartedly endorse this measure from the government, there was a drive to say, well, let's make sure that it's not being used as an excuse to go play stuff by Network Rail, dare I say. And that's a very valid thing for anyone who's tried to get a rail project moving. There's, there's an awful lot of that can go on depending on various organisations' agenda. So we've driven a scheme that's value for money, but also one that can be delivered swiftly and safely. And the last point in particular was something that was stressed by DFT and Number 10, of course, that they want something that that matches all of those bits and particularly on the safety bit. The, that led to, you know, we had some back and forth about whether we would get an announcement in December. And some of you may have clocked a mystery train. I think it was described on the SenRug webpage or Facebook page, the Phantom Train that trundled up and down the line and no one could really understand why it was. And that was very much linked to getting prepared for an announcement in the days before Covid was hitting us again with its second wave. And we did hope that we would get a VIP visitor, a prominent one in that December period. But sadly, the coronavirus restrictions came back into place. And so we didn't get that opportunity again to just emphasise to the powers that be in Westminster. Just, you know, I like them to come here and see things visually and to meet people and to get engaged because it means that they can, when they go back to their offices, that they can think about what they've seen and the potential here. But so there's a bit of an inside information as to what that train was up to back then. Because I believe that that was Network Rail gearing up for that eventuality in northern. In terms of other things that have been prevented in the Covid period, we were hoping that we might as well see some testing, and I won't be specific on the manufacturer, but I will say that we did hope to see some testing of a battery operated train up and down the line. And that may come about during the later parts of this year. It's our firm intention as the county council, and I'm sure it will be brought into by future administrations of whatever colour and nature those are after the elections that are coming later on in the year, that we want this to be as green as possible, as environmentally friendly as possible. And with battery operating maybe as quiet as possible and not have some of that noise and pollution that you would get with operation. So who knows, we may see some of that a little bit later on in the year, but it wouldn't be fair of me to say who or where or how. But I think it's something that's important for us all to note and to strive towards. As we've gotten into this year, so you will have seen the funding announcement for £34 million to get us moving on some key aspects of the project delivery. And that's really important. That's DFT and government putting their money where their mouth is for this project. And that's to cover land acquisition and as well, some works that can be done by Network Rail under their own powers. Because whilst we will still require planning permission for stations and other bits of infrastructure, which I'll talk about in a minute, Network Rail can do track alignment works and other work that will allow the line to run faster in the future. And that work is necessary. They can get on with that now without needing planning permission for certain elements of it. And that's what they'll be doing. There'll be vegetation, cutting back and other things as well. Because the last thing we want is to be stuck with having nesting birds and this and that and the other and all of the legislation that comes with that. So there's work to be done on that as well. In terms of the quantum, this is really important. And this money as well allows us to do more of the detailed design and get into the real detail of the financial ask of what's necessary for the next stages. So what, the reason that we haven't had the funding announcement that says it's £140, £160 million or whatever is linked entirely to that bit. It is about refining the price of the engineering works that are to be done so that that can then be allocated in the government's budgets. Come what may, obviously we have access to the funding that we need and that will be coming out of reverse beaching, unless the government identifies otherwise. So who knows, maybe they'll take it out of some of the levelling up fund. But my understanding is it comes from reverse beaching. And naturally, the government wants to make sure that they're drilling down on that quantum because there's half a billion pounds in the government's budget for reverse beaching. They want to make sure that that's getting spent on as many projects as practical. And some of those I hope will be in Northumberland as well, and I'll talk about those in a short while. As we've moved on into February, we've seen the first planning applications lodged by Northumberland County Council. And it was great to see that first one go in in Ashington. There's been footbridge applications as well. And then last week, for anyone who hasn't seen it already, the application for Blyth website station has gone in as well. And that is now live. And it may be, if Dennis, if you haven't clocked that already, I bet you have. But if not, I'll send you the link so that you can circulate it to members to peruse it at their leisure. There will be other applications coming in soon. I know that we were due to see the one at Northumberland Park. I haven't checked to see if that's live on the North Tyneside planning website yet, but if it isn't, it should be soon. And the works will follow too. As we, so that brings us up to date. The schedule in line with Project Speed is to implement by the very start of 2024. I would be hopeful that we can better that and that we can bring that into 2023 and that. But that very much is dependent on progress and not seeing obstacles flung up in the way that throw us off track. Don't see why that should be the case at all, but as ever with any major infrastructure project, there's always that potential. As we look towards the future of the line, of this line in particular, you know, I would still, and this is moving on to council policy, still welcome additional stations on the route and logical ones, maybe Seg Hill. And I would be interested to see if maybe we loop into Newbighan would be an interesting one, I think, in the future. I think that that community is very much a one that struggles, that having the train going into there could be a fantastic thing. They've got brilliant resource of a fantastic beach and lots of things that could be going on. And I would love to think that people would be able to make that choice to, oh, well, you know what? We won't go to Tynemouth or we won't go to Colourcoats and get off the metro. We'll go on the Northumberland line and we'll get up to Newbighan. And that's something that I think that we should all be striving for in the future. The other link, which matches SenRug's longer term aspirations as well to a degree, and it's come a little bit out of left field, was the potential or is the potential for some sort of connection into Camas and into British Volts facility. For those of you that aren't familiar, that's the Gigafactory that's looking to provide electronic electric vehicle technology into the UK market. They've got their planning application in on the, I think it was the first of March that went in. And I think it's registered now and you'll be able to see that online. What wasn't included in that submission was the rail connection itself. And that's, speaking to British Fault, I'm sure they don't mind me saying this, would be the subject of a future application. And it's more linked, and I can see Alex nodding his head because he's probably had the same thing from them. It's more linked with land acquisition and other things that they need to do in order to see that realised. But it would be great to see more freight coming out on that route in the form of EVs, batteries going down to the Midlands and to the, to other car plant facilities. But it would be also great when they're putting that £2.6 billion project in place, if they can put a platform in at the same time and we can get some sustainable travel into that site in all different directions. There is the possibility and the county council is looking at it as to quite how that could work. There's been a little bit of chatter with SenRug, I believe, but others as well on how we might do that. So there might, it might be that we can have, in addition to the two trains running north and south to provide the half hourly service into Newcastle from Ashington, that maybe we can have a one that runs east west into Morpeth and across from Bedlington and into Camas to provide that east west linkage. Because at the minute, even if you're catching a train and you want to get to Bedlington or Ashington, it's going to be ridiculous. You're from Morpeth or from the other way around, you'd be going all the way down to Newcastle to come all the way back, which is historically is of course a problem for all of Northumberland as you get further north. The final bits on this bit of the line probably is, as we open up more potential for freight export coming in and out of Camas but in other places as well, would be whether we do explore that link north to Chevington. And the line now from Ashington up to Chevington is protected under the local plan or will be. The local plan is at the very final stages of, it just needs to go through one last bit of consultation, I believe, and then it will be adopted and implemented. That will give planning protection for that route of that line to make sure that no one builds houses on it or an industrial estate or anything else. And I'm certainly keen that the council as a policy position seeks to acquire that route. And I would heartily endorse that for any future administration if it isn't my own in the future that that's looked at. Because it has no real interest for the people who own it currently. And with Highthorn falling away, which was the last reason that they were holding on to it as a potential for coal export onto that, onto the East Coast Main Line, as I understand, I think that it would be a very sensible acquisition, acquisition indeed. The final bit on the Northumberland line is a recognition that we must make sure that when we get this railway put in, that it isn't a very polished, beautiful route with some lovely stations. And then you get there and money hasn't been spent to make sure that the corridor is successful. And we are making the case to government for additional funds along with our partners in the North of Tyne Combined Authority, Newcastle and North Tyneside, that we get money for the corridor. And I'm thinking in particular, probably some works at the central station, some works in Ashington and Bedlington Station are particularly places where that should, that money should be being prioritised. Blyth, of course, with full respect to Blyth, being the beneficiary of quite a lot of government money potentially already. I think that those would be the priorities for the future and for that £34 million that we are seeking. I'll move on briefly and then I'll pause for questions on to restoring your railway. And some of you will be familiar with restoring your railway scheme from government and others won't be. And this links again to reverse beaching and that £500 million, half a billion pounds that the government's put in place to bring forward other projects. They, we've put in three projects for Northumberland. Who knows if we'll be successful or not? They may well look at us and say, haven't you had enough already? Our answer will be absolutely not. Give us some more. And the three schemes are as follows. So probably the one of less interest to southeast users is the station at Gillsland and the reintroduction of Gillsland Station on the Newcastle to Carlisle line. It is mostly probably beneficial to the good people of Gillsland, of which there aren't that many of them. Lovely place, but very sparsely populated, but it will be of use as well to the tourist trail linking with the Hadrian's Wall, which will hopefully be in receipt of Borderlands money in due course and on to the sill. So there's opportunities there for increased tourist participation in that area as well as to help the people of Gillsland. The other station application that we have put in, and this was on the sixth of March again, all of it all gone in this year, was for Belford Station. And many of you will be familiar with Belford Station. I see Lance Robson, who's not a stone's throw away from there. And we would be keen to see that reopen. We know that that's a big task. To do anything on the East Coast Main Line is challenging. I've worked with or, you know, been in conversation with the Greater Morpeth Development Trust, even switching the electricity off on the East Coast Main Line is a massive logistical headache. But nonetheless, we really would be keen to see services introduced into Belford again. Sustainable options for tourists and for locals as well. And then the third one that we've put in is one that we've worked quite hard with already with SenRug beforehand. And we jointly with Northern and SenRug sponsored a study looking at how we could put more stopping trains up and down the East Coast Main Line. Because this is a major problem for anyone coming down from the north. You know, a number of our councillors suffer from this significantly, that they have to go all the way to Newcastle to come all the way back to Morpeth for meetings. And it's very similar right up and down the line, the connections are sparse and the stations are poorly served. So whether it's Pegswood, Whittington or Chatterhill or others, you have a handful of services, but not nearly enough to make them sustainable. Because if you miss the train out of Newcastle, well, what was the point? You're not getting home unless you get a very expensive taxi or hopefully not have to flag down a lift from someone. So, you know, what we have put in for is to replace diesel trains with electric trains that will run faster. And Dennis is a much finer technical mind than mine and can tell you the exact type and the speed and why it's important that they're electric because they go that much faster up to 100 miles an hour as opposed to the diesel engines. But it's, what we've pitched for is a half hourly service and the benefits thus really are that we want more and earlier stops into Cramlington, which is a long problem for Cramlington. You can't get in and out of, well, you can't get out of Cramlington until eight or four. If your job requires you to be into Newcastle or wherever, earlier than that, you're getting a car and you're going to clock up the A1. So clearly there's benefits for all concerned in getting earlier trains in there. Similarly, at the other end of the line, we want later trains into Berwick and more of them. And so that's really important part of that as well. And then up and down the route, places like Pegswood and Whittington and others are incredibly poorly served in terms of the frequency of stops. And this would give us a half hourly stop in all of those locations and give people probably much greater certainty about the journeys that they're making and so on. So it was, it was a bit of a curious ask because it mostly revolves around rolling stock and time pathways. We're also lobbying the Network Rail who are going through their timetabling programme to agree pathways for the 2022 timetable. So, you know, it's a lot going on in tandem there. I'm hopeful that we get there. And indeed, I'm going to hopefully be speaking to the rail minister in the next couple of weeks about that as well. So I was worried I wasn't going to have anything to say, as all politicians do. I've waffled on for ages more than I expected. And so I'll shut up now. I'll hand back to Dennis and we'll go through any questions. And please don't be too technical is all I would ask, because that's what the civil servants and the excellent people like Stuart McNaughton are there for. Not simple folk like me.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Richard. We have had a few questions and we've got some more coming in. And I'm going to try and take them in order of relevance and combine them together. So one person has, this is Jerry Carpenter, has asked whether we know yet who the potential operator of the Northumberland Line will be. And a related question has, you know, does the reopening cost include the cost of the additional rolling stock, which would be necessary?
Yeah, okay. So it's a good question. And I think it's still in the process of being finalised. I suspect it's going to be Northern or the successors to Northern, though there is still the opportunity for Nexus there. I don't think it's been completely finalised yet. In terms of the rolling stock, we've looked at various options and I think that that will be agreed with DFT in a short space of time. But one option was actually for Northumberland County Council to own them and acquire them. I don't know if that's the route that we'll end up on. It would depend very much on who the operator was, I think, really. But there will be a requirement probably to bring in new stock. And the other thing that links a little bit with that is, depending on who the operator is, also may influence whether there's a depot in Northumberland and what we might do around that. So there's possibilities of depots and indeed driver training centres and all sorts of things at, maybe at Bedlington, maybe at Ashington. But it will depend on that final decision on who the operator is.
Thank you. So I must admit that I thought a decision had been taken. So I better not say who I think it is, just in case I'm wrong. But I would point out that there has been a recent job advert posted, which we saw on LinkedIn from Northern for, it's a fixed term job for two years for a programme manager to implement the Northumberland Line. So.
I think that's probably where it's headed. And I would have to bow to Stuart's knowledge as to whether it's been finalised. But I think you've given a good flavour of what's incredibly likely. There we are.
And I think we would say that actually with franchising as a system being under review and with Northern currently being directly owned by the government, it's probably less of an issue than it once was. And anyway, so I won't say anymore.
The other thing to add in there was that with regard to the Northern franchise, there may have been a requirement for the taxpayer in Northumberland to pick up some of the tab to get the trains into the franchise for the last bit of it. I think that that goes away or we should certainly be pushing that on to the sort of the generalised cost so that it's not something that's been picked up by Northumberland taxpayers.
Yeah. Okay, just a question about Newbighan. It was very encouraging to hear your comments about Newbighan. Certainly SenRug supports the extension to Newbighan. And Tom Roll has said, well, actually the bus from Newbighan to Newcastle takes 72 minutes. But he queries kind of the need to get a bus to Ashington and then get on a train. And he also says, what if I want to go to Haymarket? And that kind of relates to a question which I don't think has really been addressed in anything, which is whether trains on the Northumberland Line will stop at Manners. This is coming from me now rather than the questioner, because obviously Manners is far more convenient for access to Northumberland Street and the shopping area of Newcastle, along with the Riverside, Keyside, Millennium Bridge, et cetera. Newcastle is great if you're going on somewhere by train. But I've never seen in any of the reports whether the intention is that trains on the Northumberland Line will stop at Manners. So I don't know if you can comment on that.
I can't give you certainty on that, but my recollection was that it was, the last that I saw it was envisaged that that would be happening. I wouldn't want to go on the record to say it's definitely hap- the, the last that I saw it was envisaged that that would be happening. I wouldn't want to go on the record to say it's definitely happening though, Dennis. So we need some clarification as they go through the sort of the, the next bits of the, the business case and so on with and, and the detailed feasibility studies.
So Senrug members will know, but in some of the work we've been putting into the Network Rail Route Studies and the North East Transport Plan, we've been calling for a major upgrade of the track between Newcastle and Manners. Possibly the reinstatement of the second platform and actually even four tracks through Manners, just so that trains on an enhanced local service and on the Northumberland Line can stop there without conflict. I'll just move on to Bedlington actually, and this one is from me, Richard, which is given the aspiration to have the, you know, some trains from Newcastle to Moorworth then coming on round from Choppington to Bedlington. We would have thought the opportunity would be taken at this stage to allow trains to reverse at Bedlington, either going back to Newcastle via Moorworth or even possibly going on to Camis as you alluded to, without having to cross the level crossing, go into the siding and then come back across the level crossing. So we were saying that we think Bedlington should be signalled so trains can actually reverse in the platform. And that makes it a kind of a two-minute operation as opposed to a ten-minute operation if it has to go into the siding. So the council staff and, and the consultants have, have just said it's not possible. But, you know, we're just disappointed that, that isn't being looked at because I'm sure that will be needed and linking Bedlington to Moorworth, you know, is, is, is definitely going to be a requirement in the future.
I would say so. I'd certainly take that up with them and, because I've got some more discussions with, with them and with number ten, I, I believe even later on next week. So I, I will flag that. I don't know if, if we've gone beyond that stage and why specifically it's so, so challenging technically.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I, I appreciate that. I'm just scrolling through these questions now. Mark, we don't know his second name, but we do know he's got an iPad, which is nice. Says, are you confident of getting sufficient funding and introducing as cost effective as possible, hopefully without any job losses or re-signalling schemes?
Yeah, so this, this comes to a question of, of the various signal boxes and, and jobs. And I've had this question online before. Funny enough, it was a question that the, the number ten team asked specifically. And the question came about, well, rather than the many, many millions of pounds spent on that would be spent potentially on re-signalling the whole route and, and automating some of the level crossings could not simply be retained the way that they were or with necessary improvements, but you know, still manned because they felt that that was a potentially attractive option. I think that that's probably something that is, is being looked at in, in detail in terms of in, in terms of the scheme. I don't have an answer unfortunately, Mark, but I, I would like to think that we can avoid job losses by retaining that, those, those manned boxes up and down the line.
Thank you, yeah. And I think I've just worked out who Mark is now from the, from the question, so that's, that's excellent. So I need to move away actually. Well, I'll just give a couple of offbeat questions. Tom asks, what about incentives for older people to use the railway? And I, I guess the issue there is the imbalance where people qualify for a free bus pass but not a, a, a train pass. And the second question, someone is asking, what was the budgeted cost for Gills, for Gillsland Station? I think Horton was ten point three million, the Holden Railway Station was ten and a half million. So do you know, and if you do know, can you share what the cost for Gillsland?
I think that your questioner isn't a million miles off what a new station costs. Basically, there might be some ability for it to cost a little bit less than that depending on how, how it was implemented. But that would come in the next stages really. What we have done as a, as a council, councillors voted to approve the budget and there was about, I was trying to remember exactly how much was, I think a half million from NCC reserves and two point five million envisaged from government that'll start to firm up those numbers. So, so we'll see that in due course. And I've already forgotten the first question.
Just about incentives for older people.
Incentives.
Possibly a bit out of the council, county councils remit.
It, it is out of our remit, but I can give you the feedback which I've had from Northern and I don't suppose it's significantly different now that they're under the Last Resort operator, which is in other parts of their network, they have run incentive schemes. You know, so people, for example, who are looking for a job, they have given them free transport to go to and from job interviews and so on. I think that's a, a, a great thing and that, of course, it's good for, for Northern in that instance because the people get you know, they, they go to their job, they realise that they can catch the train there and that's how they end up going there. And so there's a calculation, isn't there for Northern there, which is that it's a good way of doing it. What they did tell me was, or have told me in the past is that their freedom to do that is reflected on what line they're on. So it's really difficult for them on the East Coast because there are all sorts of nonsense ticketing regulations which are far too complicated for me to understand what exactly how, how they impact on operators, but my understanding is that they can't do that where they're in competition on a line. They wouldn't be in competition in any shape, shape or form on the Northumberland Line. And so they would be free to work with the local authorities, with local councillors, with local MPs and local people and pressure groups such as Senrug and, and any other entity that might come about. And Dennis, you've talked about these a little bit in the past as to what might, might happen with those sorts of things that they, they can, they can do things like that. And, and so maybe it won't be free, but maybe it'll be discounted or beyond what would be the case for national tickets. I, I don't know. That would really be a question for Northern or, or the other, or any other operator for that matter.
It's, it's an argument we don't actually accept. I'm pushing Northern very hard, particularly in the kind of looking to post Covid and how to make the railway more attractive for leisure travellers. And we want Cramlington and Moorworth to be included in the Hadrian's Wall Day Ranger ticket, in the North East Rowan Robin ticket and in the Explorer North East, which is combined bus, metro and includes the Sunderland bit of Row. And they're saying, oh no, it can't be done because of, you know, we've got LNER and cross-country on the route. With a simple answer, it could be limited to just Northern trains. So I don't really accept their answer and I think it's quite reasonable to say here is a Rover ticket, you can get a local train, but you can't actually get on an intercity train with this ticket. And in fact, LNER and cross-country are now currently on reserved seats only, so you can't board anyway unless you've reserved a seat and much to my disappointment and objection, I know LNER are wanting to keep that policy permanently. So we're fight that, but I think you could have a Rover ticket which is just available on Northern. And the danger is if they don't, then they will face abstraction onto the Northumberland Line because it's going to have a better service, it could have better parking. And if they don't sort themselves out, then they're just fine people just moving across where things are more attractive. Particularly because I think the council's paper spoke about integrated ticketing with metro, et cetera. All good stuff which we support, but we want it for Moorworth and Cramlington as well. I'd like to take a question on further north actually, because I don't want the meeting to be dominated on the Northumberland Line. So we did have a question, I can't remember who it's from now, on Chat Hill and Belford. And the questioner was saying, you know, Belford is all very well, but Chat Hill exists at the moment as a station. It only gets the one train a day. So is there anything we can do about Chat Hill in the interim? And I, I think we could also throw in Pegswood and Widrington into that equation.
Yeah, absolutely. And I've talked a little bit about this in my sort of my last remarks of, of my presentation, which is that I very much hope that we can get those pathways retained in the twenty twenty-two timetable from LNER. It is contingent on having faster trains. We don't have the passing loops, we don't have the infrastructure that probably would allow us to, to get some of that. As you say, Belford is one thing, we put this in as two separate applications because we want it to be two separate things. And they asked, well, is Belford contingent on having more trains? Is more trains contingent on having Belford? And we've said absolutely not, no, we want them both. But we really want to see more frequent stopping services in Northumberland. And I had this argument with, with all of the operators and with Network Rail when we were doing the timetable consultation. And they said, oh, you know, we, we bring up and down the East Coast, we bring X number of billions of pounds of GDP and all this kind of stuff. And I said, well, you don't to us. I said, you, you, I'm very grateful for you stopping in Moorworth and Berwick and in Almouth. But as far as we're concerned, in some respects, having the East Coast Main Line running through Northumberland is a bit of a curse when it comes to interconnectivity up and down the route. You can't get, you know, into different parts of Northumberland as easily. So if you're coming, and, and this is where it comes very pertinent for the North County, if you want to see a relative who's in Cramlington Accident Emergency Ward and you're coming down from Berwick, good luck to you because you're going all the way down to, to Newcastle probably and then catching the bus or a taxi or doing something equally outlandish and hopping on and off services in order to get there. If we had more stopping services than Cramlington, you could be straight across by a taxi or by, by a bus across to, to the A and E. See your relatives and, and go back up to Berwick and be on your way. And similarly, for all of you who, you know, I see like, I see Brian Gallagher on here and you know, you've got a great resource in terms of the college in Ashington. But how easy is it to get from Berwick or from Chat Hill or, or anywhere in the north to get to our college in, in Northumberland? You can't, you, you're going to catch a bus and it's going to take you hours. And that is really, it, it actually compounds some of the problems that the college have themselves in terms of getting people in. Because if you're coming from Berwick, you're going to go down to Newcastle College or Gateshead College because it's easier. And, and so all sorts of things like that, we, we get affected by having the East Coast Main Line, which is brilliant on one hand, but a bit of a curse on the other. And I really did emphasise that to, to, to Network Rail. Don't think they wanted to listen to it, but they've heard it loud and clear and how we're all to do the same.
Okay, so Simon Hadden asked, and this is a question close to my own heart, but he says, what about a fast stopping service all the way to Edinburgh sometime over the next few years? And he mentions the point that Atkinson to Reston by one train would be great. And you, you know, I also think that Belford to Reston and places like that, having walked along the coast path would be great. And perhaps in your answer, you, you would just consider that Transport Scotland are moving ahead with the reopening of Reston Station. And we think they may be wanting to run a local service from Edinburgh into Berwick, which has implications for us because then there may not be capacity to turn around trains from both the north and the south. And the logical thing to do would be to actually just join them up. And there are precedents to that with Newcastle via Carlisle to Glasgow. And actually that was Senrug's original idea. It just got a bit too difficult working across two local authorities, et cetera. So we kind of pulled our idea back to Newcastle, Berwick.
I, I would be perfectly happy to support it. I think it's you know, stopping in Berwick in some ways makes no sense. It's not that, it's not going to be the final destination for a lot of people. And if you're running a train from Edinburgh down to Berwick, well, it might as well go all the way down to Newcastle and back and forth, back and forth. Because that's, that probably will get it more, more custom. The, ultimately the reintroduction at Reston and there wasn't, there's another one, isn't there? I forget the name of. Yeah, I mean, I, for, for those of us that are unfortunate enough to have to put council budgets in place, I believe that Borders Council paid an absolute fortune for that train to stop there. And it's good that they do for, for the residents to benefit from it. But it doesn't come, come cheap. And so if we could have something a bit more sustainable that costs everybody less in order to implement, that, that would be brilliant. It's one of these things that I will make sure to mention cheekily when I, I'm speaking next week to the guys down in London because we've got this union review going on, haven't we, about tying the union closer together? And as, as a border county, we can understand exactly what that means and why we would be in, in, in favour of having those links. So a, a good point well made and I'll, I'll certainly take it up.
Okay, so there's been a question on, is there an option for community rail partnerships? And I would throw into that.
So it's a one for you, Dennis, almost, isn't it?
Actually, I mean, Senrug is very keen and has always said, particularly if we get the Berwick service open, but also with the Northumberland Line, we would form a community rail partnership. We actually believe that we'd be better off having one community rail partnership for both lines because some of the ways we would want to promote it, such as the ones that Riverwalk between Moorworth and Ashington, you know, it's just connecting both lines together. I have to say, council, you know, the, the council officers seem to be determined, no, they want it just for the Northumberland Line. And they haven't been that keen to include Senrug actually either, which is a little bit concerning. And another question might be, kind of, why is the council spending money recruiting Northumberland Northumberland Line champions when you already have them in the form of Senrug? It, it kind of doesn't make a lot of sense if I can, well, from our point of view, it doesn't make a lot of sense if I can put that tactfully. It's a bit marginalised a little bit.
It's, it's not a policy direction and sometimes officers have, have, have minds of their own and as, as a number of you will know who've worked with bureaucracies and you know, they've done a great job in getting the line this far, they're doing a great job on the consultation. I have no firm opinion. I'll, I'll be honest, Dennis, and if, if I'm, you know, if, if I'm trying to be apolitical, what would be good is for any prospective councillors who are here at the other side of an election to maybe club together and get a little bit of cash together from their small schemes fund if they're able to do so to, to, to get you on the way to, to set up something like that or to get something like that set up. If it requires that, of course, it would probably require a waiver, I'm guessing from the executive because it would be non capital, it would be non-structural, so you know. But nonetheless, I think it's a worthy pursuit, one that should be getting moving in the coming years, the next year really.
With Berwick, it's difficult to set the CRP up before the service and that's why we haven't moved so far on, on Northumberland Line. But we do see a need for a CRP. We in Senrug have been very involved with local schools, local art groups, et cetera, and some local businesses. Although we're not saying there isn't more work to do. We recognise it would be legally separate from Senrug. So there would have to be two organisations working side by side. That seems to work okay on the Tyne Valley, so we're very keen and, and we're, we're willing to do that. I do sometimes wonder with consultants whether there's a little bit of a kind of a not invented here syndrome. Because certainly the, you know, the points we were making about the signalling at Bedlington Station to stop reversing trains needing to cross the level crossings and come back. You know, I, I think that's kind of quite a good idea. And the other points we've been making about, we do feel that the stations, actually someone said this in it's one of the questions which I was going to come on to, just about the amount of car parking, I think it was at another station, it bumps the cost up. We feel there's actually an over-provision for car parking. It feels like this line is being designed by car drivers. Someone was saying to me just on the phone today, Bedlington Station already has three car parks, never more than a third full. And yet I know a lot of local residents are concerned about some more green space being ripped up. But actually my concern is that Bebside and, and Seaton Delivell, where the entrance to the stations is, is the far end of the car park. So if you're walking, it's a good two hundred yards to get from the main road onto the platform rather than putting the platform right underneath the, the road bridge, as it were. And that's of concern to me and kind of the feedback I get, well, it's sort of too late really. And, and we certainly as Senrug don't want to do anything which is going to slow the scheme down or, or jeopardise it. But, you know, we, we have got some it. But, you know, we have got some concerns in those areas.
Yeah, and I think that you need to just keep expressing those. I raise them. And, you know, they're on the officer side and the consultant side, they're trying to marry up a lot of a lot of things. As I explained at the start, and as did you, politicians give a, you know, a policy direction, but don't actually get into the detail of saying you can't have that and don't do that and buy that off this person and do that for obvious reasons. That, you know, that there has to be logic and reason behind everything that they do. They'll argue that there is. And rather than tell me off too much about it, get one of them here and ask them.
Okay, well, I've had, I've had those discussions. They've not gone stunning me well.
Get them in a, in a, in celebrity squares that we've got going on here and ask them and maybe a bit of forthcoming.
I would also say those who are interested in forming a community rail partnership, either for either line or for just one partnership together, particularly if you represent local businesses, or parish councils along the line, or you feel you've got a contribution which is different to the kind of thing that Senrag could put in, please do contact me, chair@senrag.co.uk, because we recognise we will want wider people than just the existing Senrag Committee. Couple of other questions. Someone said about Manors having very, very poor access, in particular, there's no level access there. But again, if you look at Senrag's response, both to the Network Rail Route Utilisation Study and to the North East Transport Plan, we make the point that Manors Station, the footbridge, is only, what, 20 yards or so across from the Level Four of the multi-storey car park, which then has a level access walking route right into the town centre, except when you get to North umberland Street, no one's built the ramp, and it suddenly finishes on a flight of stairs. But there's, there's a kind of a case for, what we would like to see is the station connected to the metro station underneath it. So we would like a lift which goes down underneath into the metro station, rather than having to go out, walk around the block and come back, up onto a footbridge, and the footbridge giving straight into the car park. And we would like to see that walkway from the car park into, I think it's John Dobson Street, and then a level access down into street level. So you're right in the centre of town. So Senrag has expressed all those.
One thing, Dennis, that you might want to push, if I can intervene on that point, would be that there's a lot of development work going on. I think it's the Ruben Brothers actually control most of that area, sort of south of Northumberland Street and into Swan House and all that. And I think there's some significant development proposed there. So keep an eye out and maybe lobby Newcastle City Council, and maybe some of the colleagues on here who know councillors in Northumberland City Council could assist in this, to just say, as part of an improvement scheme for what's there already, and for better linkage with public transport, why don't they try and grab some Section 106 money or something like that from those schemes and make those improvements? Because they're multi-million or even billion pound schemes going into those places. And from what I've heard on the rumor mill, some of them are very significant employers, in terms of thousands and thousands of people who would be moving into into those sites. Well, that would surely necessitate some investment into the infrastructure of Manors.
That's good points. I think our issue with Manors is, there's lots of things. No one thing makes commercial sense on its own. Like, if I say put another platform in, Network Rail would just drop their hands in horror. But if you say put another platform in and connect it to the metro, so you don't have to go into Newcastle, back to Monument, and then out, you know, it all increases the usage. I just want to look at this question from Gerry Carpenter, who says, metro services between Sunderland and Peelaw cause havoc and operational problems for northern services along the same route line. How will you ensure that the same problem doesn't occur for the new rail service on the shared track between Backworth and the Benson Curve? And I think I'm right in saying, it won't actually be shared track. So the trains will be.
That's correct. So if you go to Northumberland Park or Palmer'sville, you can see the line that runs past the metro. And it's about additional platforms in Northumberland Park at Chymer. But the line is entirely separate. So we don't have that problem, which of course I think is being fixed or is due to be fixed in some form with voltage improvements or different overhead lines on that with Peelaw. But I'm not an expert south of the river. I try not to go there if I can avoid it.
I would obviously mention that Senrag has a much longer term aspiration. We want to see Live Town Centre connected to Newzum. The alignment is still there. The consultants working for the council think it's been built on, but it hasn't. There's a good alignment there. We can get into Live Town Centre. From Newzum, we would want to go down to Northumberland Park. But from where from then? And our view is, we should have a service which then does go on to metro tracks and goes across to the airport. So you're actually linking Live to the airport. But operationally, we don't want to see any part of the North umberland Line electrified to metro standards. I think Network Rail will be electrifying it to heavy rail standards in, you know, the very long term future. So our solution is that that would be a hybrid train, which could do that section on battery power. So we would actually see a crossover at Northumberland Park in the future. But perhaps without some of those operational problems, which Tobin Hughes once said to me, when I was touring the Northumberland Line with him, he said, we would never do that again. So they know, because they know they're going to be thrown off Sunderland when Network Rail wants to electrify it, as will, as will happen one day. I think I've covered most of the questions. If you've put a question in and I haven't covered it or summarised it, can you, if you know how to put your hand up in the Zoom reactions? And so if you go into the reactions button at the bottom and just lift your hand. Oh, yeah, lots of questions here then. So Alex Wallace, can we invite you to come off mute and put your question?
Hello, Richard. Thanks very much. I thoroughly enjoyed that. And that was refreshing to hear about a possible link to Camus as well. I blew my socks off, so to speak. I'm really concerned. I know you don't want to go into details because you need an officer here to give specific answers, Richard. I appreciate that. The consultation, he finished on December 16th. This is nearly three months later. People will want answers to that consultation. And Rachel Bateman has written to us on the parish, at least twice, to say answers will be given in a planning application. Richard, is that a fair enough time to wait for an answer? Would you personally, if if the green in front of where you live was going to possibly become a car park, and you don't know, if you have your house up for sale, and a potential buyer wants to know, is it reasonable to wait that length of time to find out?
I think that depends how many questions they've had, really, Alex, and the nature of them, because some of them are dead easy to answer, and then some of them can be really complicated. As a livelihood for, for however many years it was before I was a councillor, I used to put in planning applications for power stations and for wind farms and all sorts of things. And you would get bombarded with requests and information and so on. So my personal encouragement to officers would be to send a personal reply wherever possible to anybody. Failing that, I would expect that, and what I do in all my applications over the years, was to tabulate literally every question I got in, no matter if it said, you, you're ruining my view of whatever this is, or, you know, you're going to kill all the birds doing that, or whatever, you know, and get a detailed response and where they can find it in the documentation. Because the other thing I would say is, sometimes the information you need is incredibly detailed. And so you would end up writing, or sometimes you might end up writing a whole report. Well, if the report's already written, better waiting for that. But nonetheless, it would be good to get people some feedback sooner than that. But that's, I don't want that to come across as a criticism of officers, because we always must be supportive of officers and they've done a great job.
I think they have done a great job. And I'm aware that over 1,000 questions were submitted online. So I realise the difficulty as well, Richard. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would say that there's been quite a lot of communication coming into me about that car park issue, particularly at Bedlington. So I do know that residents are quite sensitive about it. Did I see John Beatty with your hand up? Or has your question been answered? If it has, we'll give John a.
I did, I did have my hand up. Dennis, it was, it was, it was an unfair question, really, because I was asking about the, whether the signalling system would be updated sufficiently so that the crossing gates in Bedlington Station would be closed, would be, would be down, stopping the traffic as briefly as possible, because it's a nightmare, as you know.
Good question. One for Stuart or Rachel.
That's right.
But a pleasure, John. And I nearly, you know, I brought a bigger cup of tea, otherwise I would have had my one from your parish that you that you gave me. I nearly brought it up because I thought you might be on. And then I thought, no, I need a bigger cup of tea because it's freezing up here.
I think generally with level crossings on the line, and Bedlington might be an exception to this, but generally with level crossings, which crossings which are not at stations, because trains are going faster, the crossing will be closed for longer. So if you're at Bedlington, you see that freight train trundle through about three miles an hour. And I have personally been in my car at the gates, and I've turned right and gone down to Furnis Bank underneath and come back the other way, and the crossing still isn't up. But as the line speeds, is speeded up and trains are going faster, that will cause the crossing to be closed for a shorter period of time. With the exception that there is a rule, and it's a safety rule, that as a train, if the crossing is at the far end of the station, sometimes the crossing has to go down before the train can stop at a station, just in case the train doesn't stop for some reason and overshoots. You can't have it going straight into the road. And so it stops at the station. And if for any reason, a passenger then doesn't get on, or, you know, is shouting out, where's this train going or something, then there can be a bit of a problem. So that's my honest answer on that. But as a Bedlington resident, I totally support the point you're making.
It'll be interesting, Dennis, to see exactly what the final design for Bedlington Station is, because I'm guessing that it will be trying to incorporate something that does avoid that problem, that overshoot and potential for collision with traffic. But let's see it when it comes.
They, they have to do that. And the other problem is the platforms are short. So, you know, it's difficult. They're constrained at both ends of the platform, basically. So it's a tough one to challenge. Peter Laverne, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Firstly, to say thank you very much for a very interesting presentation tonight. Excellent from both of you. A couple of years ago, I was speaking to Jamie Driscoll, the mayor, and he was saying that he was looking at extending the rail down south down to the river, past West allotment, Silverlink and Cobalt by the old wagon way. Is that on the cards? And is that, would that be the Northumberland Line?
I think that would be the link down through Percy Main and along the Stevenson Railway Museum link. And it's long been talked about. I personally would be happy to see it if there's a, if they can develop a business case for it. I mean, interestingly, I think one thing that was looked at with the Northumberland Line and down from from Ashington and then was whether there was potential to link on into places like Team Valley. We've talked a little bit about that. Again, that would be an interesting one for for the future. But in the first instance, the funding that we've got now is to get up to Ashington.
Yeah, because the incentive would be, I think they spent something like half a million pounds a year on bus subsidies for Cobalt. So taking the train a little bit further, but also being allowing, enabling people from Northumberland to go to Silverlink without taking the cars.
Yeah.
They're all Senrag aspirations, Peter. The one thing we are wary of though is, we don't want trains from Northumberland to bypass Northumberland Park. If you actually look at the track layout, if it was going to go straight down to Silverlink, that could happen. So there's a bit of an issue there. Let's not get into the detail of that one because it is actually outside of Northumberland County, and therefore outside of Richard's remit. But if you look at Senrag's papers, you will find that we are looking at that, particularly our response to the North East Transport Plan. I think we're coming to the end of our question time. So what I'm going to do, I have two more questions. I see Brian Gallagher, have I pronounced your name right? So put his hand up. And then Dave Shaw. But if you could keep those questions very, very brief, and I saw another question just come in, but we'll see if we've got time for that. So we go Brian first and then Dave. And we'll probably need to wrap up shortly after that.
Thank you very much. It's been an excellent presentation. And it's obviously given an insight of what is in the near future and also in the distant future. It's great to talk about the Newbigin Lane as well, opening that up, because the whole idea was, on the original plans, there was going to be a big car park near Woodhorne Museum, which would keep the traffic out of Ashington. But that'd still be a station within Ashington. So that people around Newbigin Lane mouth, Woodhorne can use those train links. But, you know, it's great that that link's been discussed. And you also discussed around crossings. And I think that, Richard, just as a little bit of an idea, I think we should have a review on all bridges and all crossings around that lane. Because one lane, one bridge in my ward has came up that it's been adopted by Northumberland County Council, which took the officers by surprise. And so we need to have a discussion about that, a big review about that. And the other thing is.
Can I just ask you, keep it reasonably brief, and then that will.
Very quickly, be very mindful.
Been on loads of meetings with Brian, he can't, but he'll try his best.
Well, it's my job anyway.
I know, I'm just wondering.
The crossings need, you have to be mindful of the accesses in the estates and residential homes near there. So that's a conversation. And just very, very briefly, you mentioned about the Ghost Train. I'm sorry, but I'll have to say this, I feel like Ghost Councillor very much interested in this project, wanted to go forward. Please keep the Ashington councillors and residents updated on what's going on. Thank you very much and sorry for going out, Chair.
That's okay. Thanks, Brian. I think Dave's point is also on Newbigin, Ashington's Newbigin. So let's hear from Dave.
Oh, hi. I'm, I live in North Tyneside, and Newbigin by the Sea is one of my favourite places. At the moment, I have to drive there. The idea that I could get on the metro to Northumberland Park and then the train right the way to Newbigin by the Sea is a wonderful idea. But it struck me, listening to you, Richard, that if you've got the aspiration to get to Newbigin, why don't you take the chance now and go as far as Woodhorne, which would actually then save you the the extra platform that you're going to build in Ashington? You're going to have to build a platform at Woodhorne at some point in the future. You could extend the line now, terminating at Woodhorne. It won't get me to Newbigin, but it will get me to the Woodhorne Museum, which is another of my favourite places.
It links, and officers will give us a better description of exactly why it's a significant constraint. I think it comes down to two train sets versus three train sets, in terms of the investment. Or that's, that's what I get told. And it's the same point on the question of Seg Hill. So it requires another layer of investment again, is what I'm told. But this is a, you know, it's more of a technical point. I would love to see us get into Newbigin. It will involve the laying of more track. And I've discussed this with with Dennis a number of times. It's actually more straightforward in some respects, because it would mean us trying to build on something that isn't constrained by Network Rail rules and regulations and all of the, all of the things that come with that. We can build a bit of new track quite easily. It's when you can make contact with Network Rail that life becomes much more laborious. But nonetheless, there is, in a nutshell, is what I've been told, causes difficulty with that as a proposition. But as soon as I could see it realised, I would love to. It'd be a brilliant thing for Newbigin. It's such a fantastic town, and yet it's bypassed by the road network. It's not on the rail network. And people forget it's there. And it's one of my favourite places as well. When I get to go there, Covid allowing, I'll be back as soon as I can.
I think the point is, we actually think it might have been cheaper, because you wouldn't have had this expense of building this complicated bay platform at Ashington, which actually, again, puts the station further back from the road. If you think that Ashington has the potential to have a town centre station virtually underneath the High Street, and it's been pushed south, at the expense of doing that, I think we would have just gone on to Woodhorne. Anyway, I've just summarised through the questions, and I've realised I've overlooked a question from Ryan, Ryan Fog. who's one of our committee members. So Ryan, do you want to put your question?
I can see it, but go on.
Okay. So would you, he may have dropped out of the call. So do you just want to answer?
This is this east-west platform at Morpeth?
Yeah.
Is that what, the one? And yes, there is the possibility of that. It would lose some parking spaces in Morpeth, because it would probably have to be on the south platform, taking up part of the network rail and northern sta- station car parking. There, there is more plans for additional parking provision at Morpeth, because it's thanks to Senra, it's so well-served that it needs a lot more spaces for all of the people who use it. But yeah, it, to avoid crossing the, the main line and going to the platform that already actually exists on the north, north side, but you would be interfering with the pathways of all of the various trains that go up and down the east coast. Being on the south side, you could go from there and, and go across. The other option, I think, Dennis, you mentioned it, was extending the route of one of the Hexham trains through and on and into Bedlington, in which case you could argue that you might not need that, because it would be stopping Morpeth and then going on from there anyway. So infrastructure-wise, that would be the neater solution. But that also then comes into play in terms of those options that we were discussing for access to the north and pathways for that. So wherever you, always the constraint on these coast mainline as pathways and the desire for intercity services to have more of them and for local services to have either know more or less.
Yeah. I mean, I, I, I would say personally, I don't see the point of it, because the trains already crossed the east coast mainline to get into the siding, which actually northern have just told me they're going to electrify. So for like, for 15 years, we've been saying, why are those trains going into that siding? Can't they then go on to Bedlington? And as soon as it looks as if it's a viable thing to do, they then suddenly say, oh no, we will electrify.
Probably did that just to irritate you, Dennis.
It feels like that sometimes. But I would say, don't give up that crossing. We've already got that. Once you give it up and build a bay platform, you never get it back. And I don't like, I don't like shuttles. I want trains to go to logical places like Newcastle. So I would see a service which would be diesel at the moment, maybe eventually hybrid battery train running from Hexham, Newcastle, Morpeth, Choppington, Bedlington every hour. And then another train running from, well, I'm going to say from Teen Valley, Newcastle, Cramlington, Morpeth up to Berwick every hour. And that would be giving Cramlington the two trains per hour. And it wouldn't take up any more crossings on the crossing the east coast mainline. So I just, I just wouldn't give that up. And I, I'm.
I would tend to agree with you on, on, on that. It has, it has come up in, in discussion. I think that probably that other option would be the, the better or more logical option. And we all know, you know, we've lost crossings and points and so on around Ashington Station and they're difficult to get back. And you kind of think, well, why on earth would they remove for the sake of a handful of beans for northern, for network rail? But there you are.
Anyway, I, I think it's time to round the meeting up now. But I do want to say thank you very much to Richard for giving up this evening and coming and talking to us. And actually, thank you for really driving these projects through both the Northumberland Line and the, the Newcastle Berwick Service. I mean, yeah, there's going to be, you know, issues around the edges where we might take different views, different opinions, how many parking spaces do you need, et cetera, et cetera. But predominantly, you know, Senra, and I know a number of people on this call, we want to see this line open. We want to see these trains running. We feel we're, we're in a good position now. So thank you for your work. And thank you for coming to talk to us. I don't know how we clap on Zoom when we're all on.
Well, Dennis, can, can we ask everybody to unmute and give a big round of applause?
Okay. All right. Let's do that then. I don't know if you know how to do that.
But I'll, I'll do that. Thank you for that. That's the first time I've done that. And, and all of, of listened to a, a round of applause on Zoom. It was a weird experience. Thank you, everybody. Can I just say, Dennis, for your excellent questions, for so many good colleagues from all political affiliations and non, who, who were on the call as well. And thank you in particular to, to you and to Senra members who have been driving these schemes forward for such a long time. You come to me with so many ideas and I try to listen to all of them and I try to pass them on and get someone to do something about all of them, with mixed success. But on the, on the really vital ones, we're getting there. And I'm sure that in the decades to come or the years to come, we'll get on with a lot of the ones as well.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for coming to it. If you're not a member of Senra, you can go on to our website, just click the join us button. It's only £5 a year to become a member. £2.50 if you're a concession. And you can join online. So we'd, we'd love you to, to do that and, and support us.
It's literally pennies. Thank you, everybody. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I don't mind staying on for a bit. If anyone wants to bend my ear on.